Can somebody please read us back into an open session?
I move that the board reconvene to open meeting.
Second.
Thank you. Can we certify the closed meeting, please?
Whereas Falls Church Public School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant with an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3711B of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Falls Church Public School Board hereby certifies that, to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirement by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification applies, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convened in the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you. Second? Thank you. Mr. Kimball.
Mr. Chaney.
Yes.
Ms. Highland.
Yes.
Ms. Carney.
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence.
Yes.
Mr. Rastnik.
Yes.
Mr. Sharp.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. If you'll join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wow, I saw this standing in the sitting. Yeah, it's great to see everybody here. The next thing is the adoption of tonight's agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'll move to adopt the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chaney, and a second for Mr. Lawrence. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Step one, we've adopted the agenda. Next, public comments and requests. I don't see any slips here. Mr. Kimball, are there any public comments or requests this evening?
No ma'am.
Any letters or things that need to be read into the record?
No ma'am.
All right. Thanks very much. Now the fun part. Item 6.01, recognition of spring athletes. Dr. Jones.
Well, we've certainly had a very exciting spring, and I'm sunburnt to show for it. I think we're going to start track. Ask to go first, so if the track team or the representatives, however you're going to do that, will come forward for us.
Hello. My name is Blaise Xavier.
I'm James Paula.
I'm Maya King.
And we're going to take a short moment to kind of talk to you guys about the huge success of the Mason Track. Starting off with the girls, at the district meet, we had 13 all-district performances, as well as third as a team in districts. Why, want to talk about the region?
Yes. We continued on to the region tournament the week after, and we finished sixth as a team, and we had four all-region performances. And then a week and a half later, we continued to the state meet, and we had five all-state performances, and we also finished as sixth as a team.
And now for the boys. James?
We had 11 all-district performances, and we finished fourth as a team in the district, and then five all-region performances and eighth as a team. And finally, we had three all-state performances and finished 14th as a team, and everybody was very happy with their individual and team accomplishments. I'd like to thank the school board for all your support and encouragement.
And especially to our, a thank you, a big thank you to our coaches for all their support this year. And that's the track team.
Thank you.
I think next on the list is tennis. We have boys and girls here tonight for tennis. You can come separate. Do you want to do girls first, boys second, whichever?
One of you has to speak.
Hello.
You can just say we're awesome.
Well, we had a really great season. This is the first time that we've won states since 1988. And we went there 14 to 1, going to states, and we won all three, the trifecta. Our number one, Miriam Selakaya, won singles, and our number one doubles, Kennedy Mooney and Carrington Mooney, they won as well, and we won as a team, and we're really proud of this season. So, yeah.
Can you introduce yourselves, so we know who you are?
I'm Peggy Brozey.
I'm Madison.
I'm Katie.
Nicole.
Dana.
And Peggy had a really long match. I think it was on Friday.
Oh, yeah.
It just kept going and going.
Yeah, that was pretty tiring.
That's great.
Yeah.
Congratulations on a great year.
And boys tennis? We have boys tennis here tonight?
No.
Okay. Boys soccer?
Start with names.
I'm Sebastian. I'm Seonon.
I'm Henry.
I'm Paul.
I'm Ed.
I'm Anderson.
Kayvon.
Raheem.
Reese.
Kurt.
Patrick.
Ben.
Adam.
Josh.
Brian.
Taylor.
That's almost all of us.
We're missing a few. So, yeah, we had a really good season. This is the first time we've won states since I was in ninth grade. We had nine all-district players, five on first team and four on second team. We had four first-team all-region players and one second team. And I'm not sure about the all-state. That hasn't come out yet, but...
But we do have honorable, all-met, honorable mentions for our two starting strikers, Cole Henson and Raheem Lawal. So, that's pretty cool.
Mm-hmm.
It is pretty cool.
Our record has the lowest amount of losses ever.
Is it?
Most wins.
We have the most wins as well. We also scored the most goals ever.
Yeah, we won the district tournament. Won the district regular season, won the district tournament, runners-up in the region, and then state champions.
We'd like to give a big thank you to our head coach, Frank Spinella, who's here with us today, as well as all of our assistant coaches, Brandon Quick, Bobby Penland, and Nathan Greiner.
That's it.
Thanks for everything, school.
And I'm not sure if girls soccer, they didn't think they were going to be here. Did they make it?
There's a girl soccer there.
I don't have my glasses on. Come on in.
Come on down. Charlotte knows them all. I know, and you're feeling like you're over the hill. You guys have to introduce yourselves, too.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm Claire Charleston.
I'm Maggie Mascherinas.
I'm Miss Kachahada.
I'm Anna Freeman.
I'm Neely Thomas.
We're all here to represent the girls varsity soccer team. We had another great season this year. This past weekend, we won our sixth consecutive state tournament, which is a new Virginia record, which is exciting. We also only lost one district game all season, which was to our rivals, Clark, but that's beside the point.
I don't like to talk about that.
We were regional champions as well, and we had five players named to a first-team all-district and all-region, and three players named to second team all-district as well.
And Claire Charleston was the district player of the year and the region player of the year.
Wow.
And she was honorable mention, all-met, as well.
Yes.
Yeah, they haven't announced the all-state teams yet because there was that rain delay.
So, we want to thank all of our support from our fans and parents and the school board.
Thank you.
Well done. Good job.
If I might also add, I know I asked Mr. Horn if this was the most state championships we had won at the state meet, and he did say six, yes, was it. So, it was just an amazing weekend and a whole amazing spring sports. So, congratulations to all of our teams, and it's just been fun this whole spring season. I wish we could start again. I know you need a little bit of a break, but it was really great. And this last weekend was just wonderful. So, congratulations. That's a huge, huge, amazing accomplishment.
Yeah. I hope you all had fun, too, right? Yeah. I know your parents did and the community did. Thanks for coming tonight. You're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting if you'd like, but we will understand if you have other things you need to attend to and need to make your way out, whatever you'd like. Thanks for coming. It's the highlight of our spring. All right. Dr. Jones, the next item on the agenda is 2013 annual reports. Do you want to summarize that for us?
Yes, I will. On our annual reports, when you actually look under the board agenda, it's about 60 pages long. As you remember, last year, we started collating those all into one big report for you so that you could get them all at one time and be able to read them. There's some great information in there, and I think what you'll see is all of our SAOs and committees are, were very much, the work was tied to your work plan, which I think is great. So, when you actually look at what they've been working on, it's reflected in those goals and things that they've accomplished this year. So, I won't go through all 60 pages or read those to you tonight, but I encourage you to go on and really take a look. They've done a great job putting those reports together. And just as a reminder, we do invite any of them that would like to present in person, but most of them prefer the report format for you. So, thank you.
All right. Thanks for that. And I would say to my colleagues, if you, in reading these reports, if you have questions about things that are in them, you can direct them either to the school board member who is a liaison to that group, who's our in-house expert, as it were, or simply send them over to Dr. Jones, and she'll track down the answers for you. Or you can contact the chairman of the group. They're always happy to hear from us. All right. Thanks very much. Moving right along, the next thing is the consent agenda. Mr. Kimball.
Yes, ma'am. With a long consent agenda this evening, first is personnel appointments. The school board approved the following staff appointments for the 2013-14 school year. For Mount Daniel, Julanda Young, preschool, special education teacher; Dorothy McGuire, part-time ESOL teacher. For Thomas Jefferson, Jacqueline Cunningham, second grade; Sarah Will, second grade; Kristen Robison, second grade; Aileen Mavety, third grade; Corinne Wright, fifth grade; Marguerite Flanagan, fifth grade; Adina Rosenthal, fifth grade; Kelly Arblander, special education; Joanne Bayes, special education; and Valerie Palmer, part-time counselor. For Mary Ellen Henderson, Hilly Trebbles, seventh-grade science teacher; Kazie Wallette, eighth-grade science teacher; and Stephanie Kamajda, special education teacher; and Lori Fogel, library media specialist; George Mason, Alyssa Mears, English teacher; Jacqueline Lavelle, special education teacher. For Systemwide, Anvin Wright, part-time behavior specialist; Carrie Linton-Jua, a part-time behavior specialist; Brenna Mary, special education teacher; Jessica Ing, psychology intern; and with the board appoint, Roberto Fuentes, custodian, Mary Ellen Henderson, effective July 1st, 2013. Under reappointments, the board approved the following staff reappointments for the 2013-14 school year. Lisa Court, special education teacher, Mary Ellen Henderson; and Emily Teal, special education paraprofessional; George Mason. Resignations, that the school board accept the following staff resignations effective the end of the 2012-2013 school year. Victoria Houghton Block, part-time physical therapist, Mount Daniel; Catherine Sesh, ESOL teacher, Thomas Jefferson; Catherine Reisler, second-grade teacher, Thomas Jefferson; Kelly Landers, second-grade teacher, Thomas Jefferson; Bernadette Manyplunkett, speech-language pathologist, Mary Ellen Henderson; Lisa Blandford, fifth-grade teacher, Mary Ellen Henderson; Matthew Kirk, chemistry teacher, George Mason; Wendy Atkins, speech-language pathologist, George Mason; Joy Waggoner, regular education teacher, George Mason; and Amber South, math teacher, George Mason; and under declined position, Brian Luskowski, eighth-grade math teacher at Mary Ellen Henderson, effective immediately. Extra pay for extra duty assignments, that the school board approved the following EPED assignments for the 2013-14 school year. 14 CERT instructional leadership EPED assignments, 10 instructional leadership EPED assignments, George Mason; 2 instructional leadership EPED assignments at Mount Daniel and Thomas Jefferson; and 30 extracurricular activity EPED assignments, George Mason. Advisory committee appointments, that the school board approved the following appointments and reappointments. Under appointments, Carolyn Bruce and Kim Zawicki, gifted and talented advisory committee for terms ending June 30th, 2016; Daniel Rice, family life education advisory committee for a term ending June 30th, 2015. Under reappointments, Jeannie DeRoz, daycare advisory board for a term ending June 30th, 2015; John Abraachimento, Melissa Bandi, Sylvia Mom, and Shannon Royce, special education advisory committee for terms ending June 30th, 2016; Moffett Roller, Tom Clinton, Barbara Sharp, and Mim McFarland to the family life education advisory committee for terms ending June 30th, 2015; Tom Gittens, Business and Education Partnership Council for a term ending June 30th, 2015. Under Professional Employees Advisory Committee PEAK, Joel Block, Systemwide at Large, and Estee Sherwin, less than five years for terms ending June 30th, 2015. And under the Administrative Employee Advisory Committee EAK, Saeda Ashaheed, at-large member for a term ending June 30th, 2015. Under Student Matters, Interrupted Residency Policy 9.21, that the school board approved the continuation of enrollment of a student at Mount Daniel Elementary School under Policy 9.21, interrupted residence for a period of 150 consecutive calendar days during the house renovation for the 2013-14 school year. Under non-resident tuition student, that the school board approve one non-resident tuition student, Grade 9, George Mason, for the 2013-14 school year. Federal Program Assurances, that the Falls Church City Public School Board agrees to administer and implement the general and program-specific assurances as detailed in the following federal program applications. Title I, Part A; Title II, Part A; and Title III, Part A, and in compliance with all applicable statutes, regulations, policy, program plan, and applications. 2013-14 Extended Daycare Fees, that the school board approved the 2013-14 Extended Daycare Fees as proposed. And under 2013, the SBA Media Honor Roll, that the school board approved the 2013, the SBA Media Honor Roll Resolutions as presented, recognizing Nicholas Benton, publisher and editor-in-chief of the Falls Church News Press; Steven Siegel of the Falls Church Times; and Andre Taylor of the Falls Church Patch for their ongoing and exemplary nature of reporting on the Falls Church City Public Schools to the community.
All right. Thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I move that the board approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Kimball, for that reading of... Marty may have to switch off next time so you can get a breath. Dr. Jones, I do have one quick question just for the community, and that is, we've just approved the hiring of a number of staff for next year. Where does that put us in terms of filling our tank for the next school year? Do we have a lot more staff to hire, or what's our progress?
About 14. We're most of the way there.
Okay.
But this does also include, we're looking at, you know, maintenance and, yeah.
Sure.
Across the board. Right.
Okay.
So, we're almost there.
So, you're confident that by the July meeting, we'll be good to go?
We hope so.
Madam Chair.
All right. Yes, Mr. Masnick.
Could I ask a quick question? Dr. Jones, have you had issues recruiting and retaining teachers this year? And if so, could you expound upon it?
I would say that this is the first year where I think we've really been able to see that we have lost some of our teachers to a neighboring district, and we've had a little bit more difficulty hiring as in we're competing with our neighbors right next to us. Now, the good thing is, we can steal from Fairfax because, you know, they're definitely looking, wouldn't you say, Ms. Hy, our direction. But if given the choice, and I'll just say, I mean, we know between us and Arlington, it's, the salary scales are still somewhat out of line depending on where people fall on the scale. And so, we will continue to work on that for FY15 budget and continue to close that gap because we are filling it. You're welcome.
All right. And if you would, I'm sure, Ms. Hy, you're going to do this anyway. Every year, you give us a report on people who leave and what their reasons are and where they're going and those kinds of things. We'll look forward to getting that from you a little bit later. All right. Thanks very much. Moving on to business action information, world languages textbook review and adoption is our next item.
Hi, my name is Linda Johnson. I'm the K-12 World Languages CERT, and I'm here this evening to give you an overview of our recently completed K-12 World Languages program review, as well as our textbook adoption process and recommendations. With new curriculum implemented in the IB diploma program this year, new requirements that teachers provide data on student growth as part of the teacher evaluation process, upcoming implementation of the NYPD program, and major developments in the way technology can be used for teaching, learning, and assessment, this was an exciting time for us to review our current program, to develop a vision for its future, and to review and adopt new materials that align with our short and long-term goals. One of the main focus, areas of focus for our program review was technology integration. Use of resources from Internet have revolutionized the way that we teach languages with audio, video, and print resources, giving students the ability to interact with up-to-date and authentic cultural and linguistic content. For years, Falls Church World Language teachers have made an ongoing effort to learn more about how technology can advance language teaching and learning, and many are making active and creative use of Schoology, smart boards, laptop carts, iPads, iPod Touch, digital cameras, and Google tools, just to name a few, to take advantage of new ways to communicate with students, provide extra practice, assess learning, access authentic resources on Internet. Students are using technology to communicate in the target language with each other and with native speakers, to review and practice vocabulary and grammar, to do research in the target language, to create presentations and projects, to record oral assessments and videos, and to expand their cultural horizons. In short, we've already moved down the path towards a blended learning environment, and we hope to continue down that path, with an ultimate vision of a blended learning environment in which students complete part of their language learning process online as they progress at their own pace, and in which face-to-face learning provides the setting in which students can apply the basic content they've acquired through challenging, interactive, collaborative, and communicative activities, projects, and assessments. Our vision of a blended learning model includes a move away from rigid levels, more fluid scheduling and grouping in a combination of computer-based and face-to-face learning, allowing students to advance when they reach the next proficiency level. This obviously has implications for grading, course scheduling, staffing, and use of space. But at the center of this vision is a belief in the crucial role of a qualified teacher who monitors student online learning, gives them feedback, and uses data to create appropriate interactive learning experiences that take place in the classroom. Another main focus of our program review is the IB Middle Years Program. Implementation of NYPD in grades 6 through 10 has the potential to generate a unity of focus and seamless articulation between our elementary, middle, and high school world language programs. This K-12 review has been an excellent opportunity for teachers in grade, in grades 6 through 10 to communicate and collaborate, and this 6-10 focus will be ongoing whether NYPD is formally adopted or not. We had fruitful discussions on course sequences and curriculum, promotion of the learner profile, performance assessments and rubrics, and all teachers, grades 6 through 10, implemented a common standards-based grading system this year. Transition to the NYPD course sequence, grades 6 through 10, has implications for curriculum, instruction, assessment, grading, and materials, all of which will require ongoing attention so nothing falls through the cracks. It's the, it's by far the largest task that will occupy the majority of Falls Church World Language teachers in the years to come, and will require training, collaboration, and common planning time in which to develop curriculum and to discuss instruction and assessment. Funding will be needed to support collaborative writing of curriculum that uses NYPD planners and rubrics and which incorporates articulated proficiency goals, performance assessments, essential questions, approaches to learning, areas of interaction, the learner profile, and 21st century skills. Participation of all students in world language classes as required by the IB PYP and NYPD programs led us to focus on two groups that require particular attention. Special needs students, who often struggle to keep up with the pace of our regular curriculum, and fluent speakers of other languages, specifically our fluent Spanish speakers. We hope that a combination of use of technology, options in course sequencing in middle and high school, and paraprofessional support will help us to differentiate instruction to meet the needs of these students. As I said at the beginning of my presentation, this is an exciting time for the World Languages Department, and between our vision of blended learning and of implementation of cohesive curriculum, instruction, and assessment according to the Middle Years Program, there's much work to be done in the years to come. This work will require extensive coordination, collaboration, and planning. The role of the K-12 World Languages CERT is essential to ensuring success of these plans, and in order to do an effective job, the CERT needs release time in order to maintain a presence in all four schools, be knowledgeable about the language program in each school, and have an overview of the needs in each, in all of them. Turning our attention to textbook adoption, in 2011-12, we compiled a list of elements from our K-12 review that needed to be taken into consideration when assessing materials for adoption in our middle and high school courses. These included how curriculum and assessment lined up with NYPD, the presence of a variety of current and authentic written texts, and visual images, performance assessments and portfolio suggestions, and possibilities for differentiation for special needs students and fluent Spanish speakers. Technology integration was a primary consideration, with an emphasis on an easily accessible array of digital and online resources that provide meaningful presentation practice and feedback to students. We were very happy to have found textbook programs that satisfied most, if not all, of our requirements. For Spanish, the Avance Semos series of textbooks offers well-organized and easily navigated online resources that include web quests, self-check quizzes, news videos and articles, and differentiated levels of interactive readings. The program features a cohesive cultural curriculum that's, that's current and engaging, with each unit focusing on a different Spanish-speaking area. An interactive textbook gives students the opportunity to review material and get instant feedback. In French, "T'es branché" means "are you connected?", and its blended learning approach includes a variety of digital resources accessible on laptops, desktops, tablets, and smartphones. The program is learner-centered and inquiry-based. Key words are provided throughout the chapters so students can go online to pursue topics presented in the textbook, and essential questions provide the focus for each unit. There are many opportunities for students to self-assess, a number of differentiated learning activities and assessments, and suggestions for performance and portfolio assessment. For Chinese, we decided on two different series for use in middle school and in high school. Discovering Chinese uses engaging cartoon stories to present content, a format that's appealing to middle-school-age students. The online and iPad-accessible resources are outstanding, providing students with extensive opportunities for language practice. We chose Jen Bang for our high school courses. Its online interactive textbook is excellent. The book contains many colorful cultural images and interesting cultural readings, and the video program uses native-speaking Chinese teams. We believe that these textbooks will be excellent resources for teaching Spanish, French, and Mandarin Chinese to our students in upcoming years, and that they'll help us provide the instruction that brings us further along towards our vision of a blended learning environment for world languages. I respectfully request that you approve these selections.
Thanks very much. Could you just, in a few words for the community and the audience, explain the process you went through to select these and who was involved in the process?
We had, well, basically... We had, well, basically, all of the middle school and high school world language teachers. We had five parents on the Chinese committee because we have only one Chinese teacher, and we were lucky to have community members who have expertise and education experience in Chinese. We also had two parent members for French and for Spanish, all four of whom also have educational backgrounds in world languages. And we had four or five students representing each language who also evaluated everything and gave feedback.
Thank you. It's very helpful. Are there questions from anyone on the board? Mr. Chaney? Questions? Mr. Rasmussen?
On this end, any questions, Mr. Lawrence?
Sorry, just one question that's less about the books than, is the rejiggering of the grades in the coming year, does that affect, you know, when you look at things like this? Did that make you think twice about how to do it since you have different grade combinations?
Well, with respect to materials specifically?
Right, because I didn't know if it was, you know, you try to get something for a school so you, you know, don't have staff going back and forth, and suddenly you're told, well, two schools are going to change a bit.
We did decide in French and Spanish that we wanted to have one program that was used in the middle school and in the high school. For Chinese, it just turned out that the one that we really thought was appropriate for the more advanced levels didn't seem quite as engaging and appropriate for the younger kids, so.
Okay, so it wasn't really a problem?
It wasn't a big problem, no.
Okay, good, good.
Mr. Sharp, anything?
Also, the standards-based review that you did and some rejiggering, if I can use the word again, are there some state or other benchmarks that were helpful there? Or could they be more helpful if we lobbied for some changes at the state?
The state standards are based on the national standards, and they're very, very good. They will be going under review this summer, and as far as I can tell from my contacts across Virginia, the main change that they may make is actually including recommended proficiency targets for each level of instruction. We have already done that for our own program and use the stamp test to measure our progress toward those goals, but that's been something that's kind of been missing when we get students who come from other areas, and they come here and they say, "Oh, yeah, well, I'm supposed to be in Level Four." And when we see, try to match up, you know, it turns out that's not our Level Four, let's put it that way. And so, I think it will be very helpful if the state does include proficiency targets for each level, but as far as the standards themselves, they're quite good.
Great. Will you be able to join us for the visioning at the end of?
I am planning on doing that, yes.
Cool. Thanks, thanks very much. Excellent.
All right. Mr. Rasmussen, did you have something?
Yeah, I did. This is something that I just thought of after many times that we've approved these type of things. Is there like a state statutory requirement that requires the school board approve textbook choices? I was just kind of curious. So, it's not something that can be delegated to the superintendent of the instructional staff?
It has to come to the school board.
I didn't realize that. I was just kind of, I guess as I'm coming to the conclusion of my time on this board, I've wondered if that's something that should be?
Your time wasted.
No, no, I just, I kind of wonder if I want this left to the whims of politicians to decide what should be, rather than the academics themselves, so thank you.
All right. I would simply say that, thank you upfront for describing the philosophy and the direction you're headed in for world languages. That was really helpful for me, and those on the board and the community will know that I love that direction. I think it's, I wish I could take your classes because when I took world languages, they weren't like that.
I wish I was back, starting my career in the classroom right now because it is a very exciting time with all of the tools and resources that are available.
It just sounds cool as all get out. I do have one question. In terms of the blended approach to learning, what grade will that start? Is that high school and middle school, or does that go all the way down to our little kids?
I think, I think in this, well, to a certain extent, we are incorporating, they're using iPads to create projects at TJ.
Whoops.
Excuse me. But I think that really what we're talking about is middle school and high school for right now.
All right. Thanks very much. Any other questions or discussion? Dr. Jones, anything you need to add to that?
Thank you.
All right. Very good. Thanks very much. Appreciate it.
We have to vote.
Yep, that's what we're adding.
Let me do that. I move that the school board approve and adopt the following world language textbooks: Spanish at MEH and GMHS, Avancemos by Gahala, Carlin, Henning, Boyton, Autegui, Mondelach, 2013 Holt McDougall; French at MEH and GMHS, Te Branche, Branche?
Branche.
By Tony Thieson and Jacques Peshore, 2014 EMC Publishing; Mandarin Chinese, MEH grades six through eight, Discovering Chinese Books One, Two, and Three, Better Chinese, and at GMHS Levels One through Three, Jang Bang by Margaret M. Wong and Tiffany Fang, 2011 EMC Publishing.
Second. I'm so glad I didn't have to read that.
Good job. All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And are there any opposed? All right. Many thanks to you and your team. We really appreciate your work. All right. Next is the President's Listening Tour update. I don't know, is that you, Dr. Jones, or is that Mr. Sharp? Are you doing it in choral fashion, or how are you going to do this?
Would you like me to start or?
No, we're on the President's Listening Tour update.
Dr. Jones had the, certainly the largest role over there, so.
I'll defer. Thank you.
We were invited to attend the President's Listening Tour with President Foster from the Virginia School Board, from the state's school board, and it was really a great opportunity for us just to ask questions, be able to, he really was listening to all of the questions from the audience. Region Four, I felt like had a really good turnout from lots of different school divisions. And then, Mr. Sharp and I met with him for a few minutes afterwards, and then followed up that following day or the day after that with a letter that also went to the State Board of Education. And the four areas that we highlighted after we went back and forth was, the first one was dealing with the A and the F grading system, and we did express our disappointment that Virginia had gone in that direction when, in the other states where it has been implemented, it has not been highly successful. But we do understand that it's not a Department of Education issue. It was passed down from the General Assembly, and they actually said, "We're going to do the best we can to implement it fairly," and we hope to see that happen. We also just made a note that the economic outcomes of the A through F, we are concerned about that for many communities, and you're seeing a lot of articles coming out right now about that. And one aspect that Mr. Sharp actually recommended, which I thought was a great idea, is being sure that they award positive points to school divisions that may be moving students within the failing range, and this is the first year where they actually have two categories of failure, which I hate to say that, but that's what it is, and it's fail, basic, and fail. And so, we can at least see students who are moving along those quadrants, and we're hoping, and Mr. Sharp had recommended, which we have passed along, that they get positive points for that. And I will say, it's interesting, I do think they are listening because I had a long conversation with the Department of Education just last week, and wanting to know if we could get involved this summer at more of a deeper level because they'll be discussing how they're going to calculate A through F. They haven't opened it up for us to get involved at the school division, other than our comments and sharing those forward, and they did assure me that that's one thing they are going to do, is be awarding positive points for students who maintain at a level, as well as students move within a level. So, I'm hoping that they are listening to everybody, and I think that they are. Also, we're asking for competency. We can award competency-based credit right now, but what happens in Virginia, and this has been, I think, especially a call from the Region Four superintendents, that if we have a student who, for instance, needed a credit recovery, they could enter something like geometry in September and reasonably be out of it by October and November because they've already taken the class. They may have actually done quite well in the class until the last semester and blew a big exam and just didn't pass, but actually knew the material or just didn't turn work in, which often happens. And that student, when they finish in October, can't take the SOL, so they're sitting around and waiting. And if you're in English, it's not so bad because the English is much more sequential, but if you're in a course like a history class, and when you go on to the next course, it's totally different content, you've either got to just sit around and wait to take the SOL, or you have to keep studying that content. So, we've asked them to open the testing window, especially in high school, should be more fluid for schools. And then also, we've asked for them to consider if we're going to be held accountable for A through F, making sure that we have full academic year consideration. So, if we have students who move in to Falls Church City two weeks before the testing cycle, our teachers shouldn't be held accountable for what they have learned or not learned based on the standards that year. And especially in our division, that happens a lot. I mean, we have students that move in, you know, two weeks before the test, and they're taking an assessment that they're not quite ready for, and it doesn't mean that they weren't in a great system even, but maybe they were studying things in a different order, and especially if it's a month before the test. The unit that we're doing, they've already done, and the unit they need, by the time we figured it out, they've missed it. So, we have asked for them to consider full academic year, and then just looking at closing the achievement gaps, looking at calendars, non-traditional calendars, and being flexible there, which we've talked a lot about with the waiver. So, those were the issues. Mr. Sharp, did you have anything to add?
You've covered this very, very well, Dr. Jones, and gave me, I think, a little too much credit on coming up with some original ideas. These were really ideas that were brought to the group by people who were attending at Noakesville where we went to hear this particular stop on the Listening Tour, and there would be additional stops that two members of the State Board of Education would be making, the chair plus one other member is how they're proceeding. And I think they're gaining a great deal of very, very good input. Apparently, in a previous meeting in Williamsburg, they had over 100 students show up to provide input for the meeting. Now, there weren't, the students who were at Noakesville were in a service role, helping to provide good accommodations for everyone, and that was certainly very, very welcome as well. But they're looking for input from all levels of the community, parents who certainly were represented in Noakesville, superintendents, staff, HR people as well were there. They wanted to know, one particular thing they addressed was, are there some additional things that could be implemented that would increase the ability to retain and train very, very competent staff? And so, there were some interesting ideas put forward on that, and I hope we'll hear more about that during the summer. But these were some ideas that Dr. Jones pulled together. They, to some extent, come from earlier work that we've done, especially with our advocacy for changes in the school calendar opportunities, and, you know, ones that we've worked on for a long time, providing the standards for testing, but also the flexibility to have multiple ways in which students are assessed and make those adapt to the students so that their progress is fairly assessed and overall communities are not unfairly tagged with the way that they have their schools viewed in the state or nationally, whether it's an A through F or a standards of learning, testing, or it's US News World Report-type review, which we've had some issues with in the past, too. So, thank you very much. If anyone has questions to help out on these.
Any questions? All right. Very good. Move right along. An update on the RFP for bus cameras.
Just wanted to make sure you knew where we were in the process. We put out the RFP. We had four responses to the proposal. We met as a committee, and the committee has city staff from Kathy Kay in the treasurer's office to Clifton, who's the person that actually works on our buses at the city, police department, Tom Horn was there, Nancy Hendrickson, went through all of the proposals using a very strict rubric. We've narrowed that down to the top two finalists. And then, the questions are going back out for any, for any information that we would have, or questions that we would have based on those proposals. Most of them, the questions have more to do with probably the finance side, where like one of the companies had four different versions. We could do the A, B, C, or D, and so, we're just taking that back out, and we should have a final decision, I would hope, by the next time we have our next formal meeting. So, it's progressing well.
All right. Thanks very much. Yep, please.
Add in there, well, it sort of blends in with our next one, but the goal is to have all of our buses equipped with cameras for the 2013-2014 school year, whereas we initially thought some sort of pilot approach with less than all was the way we would go. It's something we'll be able to do for all buses.
That's great. Thank you. And once again, thank you, Mr. Sharp, for taking the lead on that topic. You've done a terrific job for us. Next, we have four items that are legislative requests to VSBA for inclusion in their annual legislative package. And once again, I don't know if, Dr. Jones, are you going to step us through these, or are you going to do choral reading with Mr. Sharp, or is Mr. Sharp going to step us through these? How do you want to proceed? Mr. Sharp, what do you prefer?
I think we should take them one by one, but just overall, the VSBA does this process every year. They have a standing set of policies that, that document is on their website. Every year, they ask for recommendations to modify existing policies or to add to the book of policies, and this is the time when they ask for local districts to provide their recommendations. That's what, you know, we're going through at this point, and we just happen to be fortunate for one reason or another, our timing is catching right when they needed these done, and they had a couple of proposals that I think their staff and their committees that they had begun on virtual learning, that they wanted to have presented for change, and we happened to be the ones who were prepared at the time to deal with them. So, Dr. Jones, you want to?
Okay, on 8.04, basically, what this legislation would do and what we're requesting VSBA to review and possibly take forward is that it wouldn't just be the cameras that we would be putting on the outside of the buses through our RFP that we just talked about, but it would also allow the cameras at the stoplights that we have in and around Falls Church that you could use video from those, as well as if somebody had, for instance, an iPhone or some sort of handheld device, and they happened to see somebody speeding around a bus, they could actually send that video to the police department. And so, that's what this 8.04 is requesting, is that we send that to VSBA, and then they go through a very stringent review process, and Mr. Sharp or I, one of us will try to be in attendance and speak on behalf of this.
Okay. So, to sum it up, anytime there's one of these violations, we could receive some of the revenue regardless of the device that was used under this recommendation?
Right. And one of the questions VSBA will have, and they had it last year, is where does the money go? How is it funded? Where does, and now that we have the RFP out, and that issue is already going to be in place, these cameras would fall under the same process that is very, very tight and outlined based on our RFP that we have right now.
All right. Are there any questions about this, or is there a motion? Yes, Mr. Lawrence?
Just one question. Do we, this says that right now, the schools can get the money from people going around buses if the cameras on the buses are the things that catch it. Do we have agreement from the city that we will get that money? And is that something else that needs to get worked out?
Well, and to be honest, you know, with the RFP, and the city and the schools are both in agreement that the goal is not to make money, and I know we've talked about that, really to make money, the goal is to stop people speeding around the buses, but the first But the first couple of years, it actually pays for the equipment. You know, you don't really make a lot of money off of it. Once the equipment is paid for, then the first bit of money will go to pay for whoever the staff person is that must review video, depending on which proposal we go with. Some of them, someone included, some of them don't, but we expect it to take a little bit of staff time on the city side. So if that's 10 hours a week, we would pay those 10 hours a week. And then after that, the money would come back to city, well, it actually comes to the school, and that's by Virginia code, by the way, that it's written. Originally, it was going to be split until we really got into the legal side, and then it comes to the school. But we don't expect it to be a big moneymaker. Yeah, it's really for safety.
Are there going to be additional signs on the buses to let people know? Because, I mean, the idea is to keep them from doing it, and making sure they know that the cameras are there beforehand would help. Are we going to have something that's very visible, saying, you know, cameras onboard, or one of those little?
Mr. Kimball, I don't know if you know the legal side of, you know, and I'm sorry, I'm ignorant on that side for Virginia, what the code is for having signs on the outside of the buses. I don't know if they allow additional signage in Virginia, but we can certainly look into that. Some states do and some don't, and I'm not sure where Virginia stands on that.
I'm not right sure.
Okay. But we will certainly look into that.
All right.
Just a quick point. The City Council has taken formal action to provide for what the state code authorized. And so they have an ordinance that this will be a violation. And $250, $250 would be the amount that would be charged per violation to the owner of the vehicle. And then we did have to go through this RFP process to figure out, from the violation money that comes in, how much of it would actually be available after we paid for the costs of implementing the program, and how much would be coming back to the schools eventually. And it'll be, it'll be worked out over time, depending on how many violations there are, and the point at which the recovery of costs begins to overtake the amount of investment that was made in the equipment.
I would say those of us on Great Falls Street believe that there are lots of violations. I see them every day and half a year. Ms. Hyland?
Yeah, ideally, you know, we don't want anybody making these moves, and we don't want any violations. So let's say there are none, or not very many. How is this paid for, then?
And that's all, it's all very, very much outlined in the RFP, in that, and then when they brought their proposals to us, and to be honest with you, long-term, if you didn't, if we were not having any violations, they would probably pull the cameras eventually, because that really is, it's a self-funding program. So they all, all of four of the proposals had a, were they actually studying the traffic patterns? The goal is to have it on all the buses, but then they, most of them actually start with four buses, then five buses, then six buses, and it's gradual for that reason.
Anything else? Is there a motion on this?
I move that the School Board support a legislative, legislation position regarding additional video recording devices that could be used in prosecuting a motorist for failure to stop when approaching a stopped school bus. Specifically, the Falls Church City Public School Board supports the use of video evidence of such a violation taken from cameras installed at intersections and taken by any citizen from any handheld device. A portion of revenue received from the related penalty should be directed to the local school division.
Thank you. Second, thank you. Mr. Chaney, all in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Dr. Jones, next.
On 8.05, it's the remote participation by the public body. Out of the General Assembly this year, they did open the door slightly, where at least if you're on business, you can participate remotely. The downside is, they limited it to two meetings per year. We would love to see, you know, that expanded going forward. But this legislation is actually talking about members of the public body may participate in a meeting through telephonic or video means, and that a quorum can be accounted for by electronic vote. When it goes forward to V SBA, we would like to request that they expand that, too. The great thing is, at least from July 1, and especially for some of you who may be, you know, going off in November, you don't have to worry so much about saving that meeting for budget season. So it may help some people in the summer who are traveling on business or vacation and still want to participate in one of our meetings. And one aspect that I did have clarified from Wendell, who's the V SBA attorney, is that work sessions and school board meetings both count as meetings. So just for clarification. And you have two a year. But we would like to keep pushing to get this broader and more open, because it just is simply the way that people conduct their lives now.
All right. Yes, Mr. Lawrence?
Just one question. Participation would not include voting?
Yes, it does, and under the new legislation.
It does?
Yes. But you can only do it twice during the year. It's full participation. You have to have a quorum assembled locally. But as long as we have a quorum here, we could have your face up there on the screen, and you could fully participate by Skype or whatever means would be best.
Anything else? Mr. Sharp?
And our proposal here is to expand, perhaps even have no limit on the number of meetings at which this could be implemented. And the reason for that is that the meeting integrity would still be protected by a number of conditions that are present. One is the fact that we must have a quorum present at the meeting designated site. Another is that those who are participating at the site would have to consent to the participation by the person who's participating electronically. And thirdly, the person who is in the remote position would have to be able to be heard by the public assembled in the meeting, be able to be heard by those who are listening in by whatever broadcast means we have. So all of those would be conditions for any of the meetings and would preserve the integrity of the meeting.
All right. Thanks. Anybody on this end have a question? Yes?
Not as much a question as a comment. I actually oppose this. So, yes, we are moving this way as a society. There's no doubt about it. I mean, I carry like 15 mobile devices, and we're constantly in, you know, these forms of communication. But I kind of view, like, the elected body as sort of the whole crux of democracy, no matter what the level. And I think there are a few things here. There's the practical matter of what I see as potential costs associated with this going forward, especially if we open it up to beyond just the limited pilot program here. But there will be costs. And as somebody who lives in this, like, world of constant teleconferences and video conferences as things, they do not work well. We can say that that's a great way to do things, but they don't. And we're not going to be able to hear, and there's going to be questions about what was actually said, and what was recorded, and bumbling, and infrastructure. It's going to be more involved than you believe as we go forward. And I kind of don't like the idea of, like, trying to make an elected body comport to the schedules of people. Like, if you're going to commit to running for and serving on an elected body, you need to commit to the schedule. So, you know, I try not to be old-fashioned on many things, but this is one where I kind of am. And I think that, you know, you haven't seen this type of activity adopted at the federal level. It's rare to see it at the state level, and I don't think we should even have it here on our quaint little school board, to be honest with you. I don't like the idea of remote meetings, and I think we should continue with the integrity of the in-person meeting structure.
Thank you. Anybody else have a comment on this end? All right. Is there a motion? Oh, oh.
Can I just?
Yes, Mr. Sharp.
Suggest that the proposal is going beyond what's currently allowed. We will have an opportunity to look at the bylaw later, and, you know, to the extent that an option like this is available, we can also act upon it locally. I think this kind of provision is available certainly in the private sector, and is used just on a regular basis in the private sector for corporate board meetings and nonprofit meetings that I'm familiar with. It is written into the bylaws. Electronic participation is perfectly acceptable. So, yeah, I think this is a departure for public bodies, but I think there's, there is a barrier that we've seen for not just our elected officials, but for our appointed bodies as well, where it's difficult to obtain strong participation without accommodating the schedules that our busy folks have, whether that's family obligations or business travel. And so this does attempt to provide for it, attempts to sustain the integrity of the meeting. And I think at any point that the conditions break down, there's always the ability of the quorum that's present at the designated site to recognize that the remote participant isn't able to function as intended, and at least for the remainder of that meeting, they could then move to proceed without the remote participant. So, well, and I think this isn't just our, you know, our own local condition. We have others throughout the state that I think this is something that should be allowed. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Sharp. Mr. Raznick, I would simply say that I understand your concerns, and did this not include a quorum of the public body physically together? I might share them. But I think with that as the foundational principle, it's easy for me to support this. So at this point, yes, Mr. Lawrence?
One more thing. My initial question about voting was because, to a certain extent, like Mr. Raznick, I'm going to support this, but if it, you know, God willing, if it did pass when we implement it, I would not want voting to be included in that. I do think that's where you need to show up to be able to vote, at the very least. And I would want to limit it and not make it, you know, you can do it as many times as you want, because I think it's true. You know when people are going to meet, you know when bodies are going to meet, and to me, if you can't commit to be there, you know, significant majority of the time, then honestly, you should look at doing it some other time, or simply say, put me on a body where I, you know, you can appoint me to, and I can actually show up. So I'll vote for this, but, you know, God forbid, well, not God forbid, but if the Assembly, if the Assembly ever, you know, saw its way fit to enter the 21st century with vote, I would want to limit this, and particularly on voting.
I think I'm correct in saying that were this ever to become law in the Commonwealth of Virginia, we could certainly implement policy for the behavior for this particular school board and what we would require. But there are, I think, 132 school divisions in the state that have different needs and methods and means, and frankly, I think, I can think of any number of times in the past where this would have been beneficial to the school board to have this flexibility. So at any rate, and who knows what it will look like when it comes out of the General Assembly, anyway. But this at least gets the topic on the table in a substantive fashion, which is a huge step forward. And so, is there a motion, please?
Can I ask another question?
Last one.
So, and actually, that's apropos of my point. I am curious, Mr. Sharp brought up a good point, that is, you know, let's say a member is on vacation, or sick, or traveling on business, and wants to participate in a meeting. Let's say it's a very important meeting, it's a budget meeting where there's a contentious vote, right? There's seven of us. So if there's six sitting at the table, and it's a three-three forecasted situation, and this person desperately wants to get, have, be in this meeting, can that person basically, I mean, does the quorum body have the ability to not allow them to participate in the meeting if they're away? If there is an issue with static on the phone, or something wrong? I mean, you kind of mentioned that, oh, if there's a problem, we could, the quorum body could just negate the participation. Would the person who has this sort of right to participate now be able to say, I insist, I'd be able to vote? I mean, because honestly, like, if I was sitting here as a member of this body, you know, I, we would have to respect Robert's Rules of Order, and I could talk all night about an issue and debate it, and we can follow the rules, but you can't throw me out of the meeting. In essence, what you're doing to someone who is trying to participate remotely is you're throwing them out of the meeting if you can't be heard.
I think that actually, it may have been good to put this one before, but down on 8.08 is the first reading on the bylaw, 2.23?
I looked at it.
Yeah, and the one thing it does, it does stay, and it does state, is that you can only participate if, and then it has that criteria, by electronic means pursuant to the section, only when the quorum is present, and when arrangements for the voice of the remote participant to be heard by all persons at the primary or central media location. So, by the way, it's written, you know, that's the only way they can participate would be if it was?
No, I understand. It's just, Kieran, it's the description we've just described. You have to give notice, you're going to do it first, and they have to be able to be heard. So we start the meeting, and Hunter turns on the, you know, Omniscreen, or whatever we're looking at, the telcon thing, it doesn't work. What happens?
The statutory provision that's cited in the bylaw that we'll look at later, the statutory provision says specifically that, first of all, the quorum must consent to the remote participation. Secondly, that the person who is participating remotely must be able to be heard by those on the panel, at the designated site, and by the public. If those conditions are not present, the remote participant doesn't come in. And as I was saying, at any point that that, that those conditions break down, the quorum could recognize that the conditions are no longer present, and the remote participant is out for that remainder of the meeting, or that portion in which the communication is interrupted.
Sounds like an invitation to shenanigans to me.
Is there a motion?
Chairman, I would move that the Falls Church School Board support a legislative position where a quorum of a local public body is physically assembled at one location for the purpose of conducting a meeting. Additional members of such public body may participate in the meeting through telephonic or video means, provided such participant may be heard by the public. A quorum may be accounted for via an electronic roll call. And I'll just cite the provision from the state code. Dr. Jones, if you could just let me know which number that is, and say that that's, this is part of the underlying motion that we're adopting. We're not seeking to change the other conditions, it's just that the additional members may participate through telephonic or video means.
There's like a ton of references. You want me to read them off real quick? It's Code of Virginia 1950, as amended, sections 22.1 through 69, 22172, 2.2-37700, 2.23708, 2.23708.1, 2.23701.
Yeah, it's 3708.1 that has those conditions in it. And we're not proposing to remove those conditions.
All right. Thank you. Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Chaney. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed?
Opposed.
All right. And any abstentions? No. Okay. Thanks very much. I'm sure there'll be a lot more conversation about this particular topic before it's where all done with it. All right. 8.06, Dr. Jones.
8.06 is a result of, as you know, I co-chair the Virtual Task Force for V SBA at the state level for Virginia, and we do meet about every three to four weeks electronically, and we meet in person about three to four times a year. And as we've worked on with different bodies, including the State Department, Virginia Department of Education, and I NACOL, and lots of different organizations, that we had two requests this year for legislation. But because we are a committee representing V SBA, we need a school board to actually recommend to allow the committee to bring the legislation forward. And so Barbara Coyle, who's our director at V SBA, asked if our school board would be willing to support this legislation request to V SBA, because we were the only school board meeting right now. The rest of them weren't meeting until July, and they would like to have this to go forward for V SBA. This request for legislation is that we're requesting a pilot model virtual learning program, and it's really program, and it's really asking for grant funds or incentives for that local control, and to be able to do innovative programs dealing with virtual learning, and probably what actually Linda said with World Languages is a prime example. When she talks about blended learning, and she's talking about wanting to look at, if you read a report, like Middlebury has some great program that they're just coming out with. When we looked at it last year, it was actually, I mean, there were some really good components in there, but it was so expensive, it was difficult for us to make an investment to trial something, to see how we, to do our own pilot, because we just didn't have the funds. So, that's what this legislation would do, is requesting some money for school divisions to be able to apply for pilots for virtual learning.
All right, I'm going to start on my left. Questions, issues, concerns, thoughts? Any? Any on my right? All right, is there a motion?
Madam Chairman, I move that the school board approve a request for a legislative position to VSBA to establish a pilot model virtual learning program, to provide support and grant-funded incentives for local school divisions in Virginia, to offer innovative K-12 virtual education programs, which could serve as models for programs in other school divisions.
Thank you. Do we have a second for that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Highland. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And any opposed? All right, very good. And then, the next is evaluation and cost benefit analysis.
8.07 is also a result of the task force work, and really asking the state superintendent to conduct evaluation and cost benefit on the different types of virtual course offerings. We find that when we're working with school divisions around Virginia, different localities have implemented in many, many different ways, and we're wanting to learn more from each other. And some divisions have been able to implement their own course structures, and really finding out how much did it cost, you know, how does Virtual Virginia, for instance, compare price-wise for some smaller divisions in comparison to developing their own curriculum, and really going in and looking at all of those aspects. So, that's what this legislation is asking for the state superintendent to be able to do that on our behalf.
All right, thank you very much. Questions, concerns, issues? Seeing none, I'll call for a motion.
I move that the school board approve a request of a legislative position to VSBA to propose that the General Assembly direct the state superintendent to conduct an evaluation and cost benefit analysis of virtual course offerings in Virginia, local school divisions, and at the state level. This study would include Virtual Virginia, as well as other locally developed programs.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? No, all right, thank you, Dr. Jones, and thanks for your work on that task force, by the way. I know that you have plenty of other things to do between your golf and tennis lessons, but we appreciate you taking that on your plate and doing such a good job with it.
Thank you.
All right, next item 8.08 is first reading of bylaw 2.23. We just talked, I hear is about it, but perhaps, Dr. Jones, you could step us through it.
Really what we've done with the bylaw is we've taken what came out of General Assembly, and there are not huge changes, but what it does, it's, Tom has redlined, Tom Hornet's redlined for us what those changes are, and it's slight things, letting the school board chair know, or school board member notifying the chair of the board that you're unable to attend the meeting, that needs to be on or before the day of the meeting. It used to be emergency only, they have added in language personal matter, where you could actually access that, which was different, and I'm just trying to see what the other, and those are the big changes that are actually in the bylaws coming out of General Assembly. The biggest change was that it could be for, you know, issues like business, travel, what used to be emergency only.
All right.
Quick question? So, all these changes just match what the statutory changes are? There's nothing else?
Right, right.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yeah, Mr. Lawrence?
One is the same question as before, does this include voting remotely? Because participation is the same language, but I didn't think we could actually do that now.
I'm sorry, whether or not this includes the voting aspect?
Whether or not, does this, does participation here mean the same thing as participation in the legislative proposal, which included being able to vote?
You know, when I asked Wendell, that Wendell clarified that for us, in the way that it's, and this is straight from what we got from General Assembly, that it does include voting. What is participation? Because that was one of the questions we asked, what does that mean by participation? Does it just mean, because in the past, you know, really, on any meeting, you could sit and listen, which, you know, we had done at a work session for somebody, you couldn't vote or participate, but you actually could listen to the meeting. That participation is seen as having the right to vote. And this talks about participation.
Did that?
Okay. Yeah, no, I mean, it tracks, it's just pretty much what I said I would vote against when we spoke a few minutes ago.
Yeah, so I might suggest that, since this is first reading, that we could approve first reading, and we could clarify that before second reading and adoption, and vote on, or not, as we might like.
Okay.
Because if you're asking, that tells me that for the public, the policy needs to be clear and understand what participation is.
Right, well.
And we may end up, at the end of the day, saying, no, we don't want that, and redefining it for us, but at least that way would be clear.
Yeah, I mean, and this is limited to, you know, two meetings, as opposed to everything. I understand that. But also, if we're going to, as you said earlier, if we're going to make it so that it includes both regular and work sessions, I think we need to make that clear, too. Because to a certain extent, you know, somebody calling in remotely to participate in a work session, to me, makes more sense than, you know, calling in to phone in a vote. So, yeah, I mean, to move it forward, I'll vote, but I definitely really do not think remote voting should be allowed. And partly, you know, think about what Greg said, I mean, if it is going to include voting, then I guess we need to put in the language from the other one about, you know, having a vote of the quorum, and the problem there is, if you do have a 3-3, you know, someone has to propose that the person be allowed to vote, and then as long as the three people who are against the person calling in remotely vote against it, then they're blocked out, even if they're allowed to. I mean, it does allow, you know, shenanigans, as someone said.
Well, those are the, I just say, that's precisely the protection that you're looking for, that you want to encourage the person to come to the meeting.
Right.
And that's, that points out an instance where there definitely is encouragement for the person to come to the meeting. Because if he was, if that person was at the meeting, then.
Then their vote would win.
They couldn't be blocked from voting.
Right.
So, I would suggest that the better way to encourage a person to come to the meeting is to not allow for participation remotely at all. So, but I made that point earlier.
I think you did. All right.
I've noted this, I think we have to review changes.
Do you want a motion, Susan?
I do, I would like a motion, but just like, I think Kieran has something he wants to say first.
As we go to second reading, and as we come to our July, I think where we adopt bylaw and rules for our upcoming year, I would like if we could clarify also our student participation in meeting. I'm not sure that we fully looked at that issue when we brought the student member on board, and just like to clarify how, if we would record a, even if we don't call it a vote, but record some position that the student member recommends to us on an issue on which we're voting.
So, Susan, does it make sense to defer this item until further discussion?
I think since it's just first reading, we could go ahead, if the board would like, and approve first reading, and then have some things we do before we bring it back for second reading.
I'll make a motion, I just, that was more of a point to clarify. I'll move that the school board approve first reading of bylaw 2.23, regular meetings and electronic participation in meetings from remote locations.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed?
In honor of Caesar Rodney, I vote no.
That's obscure for me.
Actually, one question.
Yep.
Does Virginia allow proxy voting at all? I've never seen it done.
Oh, I don't believe so.
It is for the world of corporate boards, but not for public elected bodies.
No, you have to be.
Well, that's just it, you have to, the whole idea of not allowing proxy voting is you have to physically be there. So, it would just, as we go forward, it seemed like, if you're not allowed to give your vote to somebody, and you're not going to be there, then you shouldn't be allowed to vote if you're not there either, but.
Well, thank you for that, but not being physically there doesn't necessarily mean not being there, in our current electronic society.
No, no, you're either there or you're not. You can call it in, but, okay, but then.
But anyway, we've agreed to this for this evening, I believe, and we can bring some of these things back on second reading. I'll ask Dr. Jones to clarify what participation means.
Yeah, may I just clarify, in the private sector, where you have proxies, it's at a shareholders' or members' level, not generally at the director's level. And so, you know, that's a different level than our board member level. Our board member level is comparable to the board of director level, not to the shareholder or member level.
Just running out of opportunities to take polite swipes at your mixing private-public communications.
Thank you for that. All right, children, moving on. To item 8.09, which is Dr. Jones' construction update. And is this TJ, or is this TJ plus Cherry?
This is really the construction update that we just do monthly, and I do all of it.
Okay.
And we have three projects, really, that we're working on right now. It's Mount Daniel TJ, and Cherry Street, it's all at different points. For Mount Daniel, Mr. Lawrence and I both met with their homeowners association, and they do, you know, we've told them that we're connecting with them, and they want to know, they know that this summer, we have some facilities discussions where Mount Daniel will be part of the work session, so I messaged them this week to make sure they know when that work session is, and helping get that word out, when we're talking about the Mount Daniel facility. With Cherry Street, we had our first community meeting at Mount Daniel two weeks ago, I believe. We had quite a big turnout for that meeting, lots of questions and discussion that night, and out of that, we have several kind of little issues that we're working on, where the community really, I think, wants, I think, security, that we're going to build a pre-K, that it's not going to grow into a big giant facility, that we're not, the intent is not to take the tennis courts, not to take Freddie Park, which I think all of us know, because we've been working on this for, you know, a while, that's never, ever been the intent. And so, I've reached out to Mr. Shields, and also to Mr. Foster, to see what we can do to make that more formalized, so that they can hear that on the city side. And I think it's just that trust factor in that they know that with any elected body, that five or 10 years from now, there'll be different people sitting here, different people sitting on city council, and they're really looking for some long-term, something more of an assurance, that as individuals change on the elected bodies, that their, the facility's not going to change, or go in a totally different direction, which we are very respectful of their thoughts. They also had concerns about landscaping issues there, and would we be able to maintain the property, and who's been maintaining it. So, we're working with the city, and we're getting, we're going to be a little bit more proactive and take over some of the landscaping a little bit earlier, as we start working more and closer with the community. So, that's a work in progress. Today, Mr. Tarter on city council, actually, because they wanted to talk to a city council member, held a meeting on Sunday with the Cherry Street community members, who just had some questions for council. And so, he emailed today, and we've chatted, and we're getting ready to have some more smaller meetings, just to invite them in to say, what are any other issues that we want to talk about as we start looking at? Because we're really at that base level, you know, we haven't done any design work, we haven't done anything. So, I think the people that live in that area, hopefully, will be really excited to be part of that process as we go forward. TJ is just.
I believe that was Mr. Marin, that, I believe you mentioned Mr. Proctor. I think it's Mr. Marin who has.
No, 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 it's the Cherry Street.
Who sent a letter.
For the Cherry Street group, I believe it's Mr. Marin who has been sending notes and who held the meeting. Mr. Proctor used to live in Mr. Marin's house, but Mr. Marin apparently is there now. Just so we get the name straight.
Oh, no, I said Mr. Tarter. I was talking about city council, I'm sorry.
Pardon me, pardon me. I misunderstood.
But I do know who you're talking about, so, I apologize, I didn't mention him, I know he sent a letter, sorry.
Let the record reflect that I'm confused in person, and certainly have no clue what's going on when I'm remote in.
Oh, that's certainly not a first.
It can happen.
I apologize for our lack of clarity. For TJ, for the TJ project, we are up around, I don't know how many boxes, but definitely well, well, well over 1,000, I think maybe a couple thousand by now, actually, because we delivered 800 more boxes on Monday, and everything is getting packed up. They did tours today for the staff, which was really exciting, three different times, where up on the top floor, it really, it's all painted, so you can see the colors, you can see, the only thing that's really not done is the floor. So, it's been really fun for the staff, I'm not going to say every day is fun, because it is so stressful trying to pack up at the end of the school year. And probably one of our worst fears is that, you know, this coming next weekend, we start on Sunday, the actual moving crew does, believe it or not, on Father's Day, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, is that the elevator will break. And of course, this last weekend, we were supposed to be moving everything out of the media center ourselves, and that's in order to be more cost-effective, and moving slowly over this week, and the elevator broke. So, we're hoping by tomorrow it's fixed, which, so we can stay right on track with our move. But the building is just, it's looking great, and we're just really excited about where we are, and they're starting on task, too. When you go in the older section, it just was, it's very interesting now, because there are no ceilings, and, but the teachers are doing a great job, and we really commend them for their patience, because it's hard to finish the school year trying to pack up your whole classroom. And so, and the tech team, I commend them as well, they've been over there pulling every smart board, every projector, every, because just making sure that equipment's protected as well. Mr. Padilla has worked extremely long hours. You know, they're working in that building pretty much 24/7, there's a small break at night, but just getting the gym floor taped out, where every classroom has its own space, it's like, it's just a well-oiled machine this summer, and everything is just right on target. But I was thinking yesterday, how many classrooms we're actually moving, and I think it's up around 70 or 80 total, by the time we really get finished, it's a lot, and people moving in every single building. But it's going great? It looks great. I had a chance to tour it the other day, and it really is, it's looking like a place. But it really wasn't, yeah. That was fun. Yeah, it was, it was fun. So, that's our update on construction, and I'll keep updating you like this every month on the different projects.
Very good.
Can I just ask a quick question? So, you, we're on track, right?
Absolutely.
Everything good to go?
Absolutely.
People ask all the time, you guys know, right?
Yeah, and when you go inside, you can really see it. It's harder, I think, from the outside, and truthfully, you know, I keep trying to remind people, and when I was at the parent meeting, I'd make a point to bring it up, just if they don't ask the question, like, when the fifth grade transition meeting, that task two is not scheduled to be finished until December. So, I keep saying that, but again, our goal, we're really hoping, and Hess is being aggressive and doing a great job, is that it will get done much, much, much earlier. But there's no question about the new construction, yeah, they're fine.
Okay. On the Cherry Street project, there was some question about whether Mr. Chaney would continue to be the board's liaison to that project and that community, and I'm not sure that that, how that got sorted out.
We just need to keep talking about that, I'll talk to you about that.
Perfect. Great, just want to make sure we have somebody who's working with that community. Okay, so, authorization for superintendent to hire staff.
And this is the same request I've brought to you the past two summers, which really helps us to be able to recruit and get people signed up, because we do have long gaps in the summer where we're not meeting. And what this allows us to do is, when the principals have interviewed, we've checked all the references, it allows Lisa's office to issue the contract, to get them signed, and then we bring them to the next school board meeting to you. So, it's given me that authority in the summer, so that if we're not meeting, we don't lose good people, because if we can't sign them, we will lose them.
Uh huh. Questions? Anybody? Nope, seeing none, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that the Falls Church City Public School Board authorize superintendent to hire staff, is deemed necessary until the names of such individuals can be brought to the school board for approval at the next scheduled school board meeting.
Second.
Thank you, gentlemen, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you. Long-range projections?
You know, as we talked a little bit about in the work session tonight, Mr. Kimball and I are already working on the FY '15 budget. We do start early, it sounds crazy, but in the summer's the best time for us to make a lot of them headway, because it comes very fast once the school year starts. This is really the very first chart that you have as an attachment, is looking at the low student growth, the mid, the moderate student growth, and then the high. The biggest change in these three, Weldon Cooper numbers don't change, as far as those predictions, they're very solid. Where it's a challenge for us will be, of course, going forward as the economic development side, and really coordinating closely with the city on what's coming online, how many units, are they one, two, three bedrooms, and how many students do we project to get from those? And then we also look, of course, at inflation rate by cost, and what would be the percentage increases. The one thing I would say that you'll notice is that probably our most challenging year on any of these will be in that F- on any of these will be in that FY18. Seventeen, eighteen? Seventeen, thank you. FY17. And you'll notice from low to high, we could swing by more than 100 students, which is a lot for us to absorb. And that's because that's the year that Lincoln and Rushmark both opened that same, that same year. I'm very hopeful that perhaps they'll be on a timeline where they're opening in the summer and we can, you know, not have that flow in, hopefully, November, December, January, because that's where it could really become a challenge. But this just gives you the three different projections based on, the low is what we consider where the city had the projections on Lincoln and Rushmark. And the moderate is probably where we really feel we're more likely going to be. And the high is based off the calculations on apartments as they are in the city right now. But we're hoping adding more apartments that will spread that out, so.
Can I make a request? And this came up partly at the first Cherry Street meeting, and that was what exactly are the latest, latest numbers? And there's all kinds of numbers floating around on our website. And people have different sets of numbers. And we had some really good numbers in our budget process. Can I, given our next work session is on facilities, which obviously this is a driver into, can we take these numbers, some of the numbers we had in the budget scenario and the budget packages that we had and kind of assemble the definitive, the historic? Yeah, the historic, the by-facility, by-building, definitive set, the projection numbers and call it, like, almost put a wrapper around it and say, as of today, this is our historic, this is our building-by-building breakdown, and this is our future projection. And kind of use that as a standard baseline and scrub our website and make sure there's not other sets that magically are buried four links in. Because I think we end up, again, getting back into multiple, why are these numbers different than those numbers? And since that's the biggest driver into facilities, that would really help me know that I had the latest.
And I think really, it's probably just making sure we get a lot of the old stuff off of there. Because that really is Weldon Cooper chart. And then the thing that was missing on Weldon Cooper when we first started this year is this low, middle, high range. Because that's what we really discovered, I think, going through the budget process, so. And that next chart that's kind of next to it is the one where, when you look at the top and it kind of just shows you numerically even, like what the number of students we expect from Northgate, Lincoln, and Rushmark. And that's, and those are really, those have really changed, I think, through this budget process. When you look at Rushmark, it goes from, you know, up to 80 students just from that development or 34, which is such a big difference. Where at the beginning of the year, we were only using that top line chart because that was the city number. So we'll go and pull all of those back in together in one. Yep, yep. And this is all new data for us. And it's exciting for us to have it because we feel like we're able to plan so much better for low or high.
Right. I have a question, which is, the forecast transfer to the schools, is that simply the number of students times the current transfer with a CPI? Or did you actually kind of go back and break down and say, in future years, we have this 3 million thing and it's unfunded now. We need to get our teachers paid and we need to add that on top. And this year, we need a car and this year, we need a bus. So did you kind of build it up? Or did you simply take today and streetline it out with a couple percent?
Basically, we kept it as simple and basic as possible. We looked at this per-student city transfer that was approved for the upcoming year. Then we did look at that which was the unfunded in the request of 351. And we did factor that into the FY15 budget to say, these were needs that we knew in FY14 and they will remain needs. So we did, that was the one adjustment we did. Other than that, it was simply, as you said, looking at the local, the city transfer on a per-student basis. And then from one year to the next, to apply an inflation factor, a CPI to that. And used a moderate 2% factor from one year to the next. And then multiplied that by the projected number of students.
And, thank you. My, I guess my question or my concern would be that, that once forecast numbers are presented, it's difficult to change them. And we, we're starting to lose staff because they're paid well here as compared to Arlington. We know we have to replace buses and things. We know there are technology needs. I mean, I just, I would just want to make sure that whatever numbers we put out in forecast were numbers that we felt we could live with that reflect our current knowledge of the situation. And I'm just not sure that that 2% lift does it. So I guess I would ask you to go look at that and make sure. Because once it's there, it's there.
And that's one of the reasons we wanted it on here tonight and get in doing it really early. It's just getting feedback on, do you like the low, middle, high? You know, doing more of a range where we haven't done that before? You know, is there a different way that you want us to look at it? So as you kind of process it and think about it, feel free to email us. Because like I say, we're just starting the process. And we, the city had asked for us to do a projection, but we haven't submitted anything because we had expressed that we'd have to come to the school board first.
Yeah.
And that's, yeah, we're just trying to give you a quick look.
Good. That's fine. That's great. Any questions down here? Yeah, Mr. Sharp?
Yeah. In general, I like a low, middle, high approach. And if you could, as we approach our further study on facilities, take another call, I guess, to Weldon Cooper and ask if they've had any second thoughts on their look at how they're seeing particularly the phenomenon of the change in birth rates. So I think there's been quite a, quite a change during the recessionary period.
And I might just add too, just for future thought, with Weldon Cooper, I will contract with them every September going forward. So we always get the newest year for birth rate. And so when they look at us again this year, they look at their current chart. And if they need to make any adjustments on that birth rate aspect, they will for us too. But that's kind of something, we don't want to just sit on it for four or five years and then, you know, get it done again. We're going to keep up doing it every single year. So it'll be updated in September for us. Once our little bodies get here.
Excellent. Any other questions or concerns? All right, very good. Yes, Mr. Lawrence?
One question on the student enrollment for plan development document. Where you've got the totals over on the right-hand side and you've got the highlighted in yellow and then you've got a red number underneath. So for example, in projection one, plus 983 is plus 983 related to what? Because it doesn't, you would look at it and think it was 983 from the first total, but it's clearly not on any of them and it just...
What it is, is when you look at the top, again, and this was where we started in the budget season this year, the top was just that Weldon Cooper, which shows that trend line. When you look down at the bottom, it's actually adding in Northgate, Lincoln, and Rushmark. So it's giving you how many students, when you add in plan development, are over and above Weldon Cooper?
No, I know that. But the problem is, it looks like each box looks like the plus 983 should be from the 2013, 2014, when in fact, it's from the 20, the 2007 that you're chart at the very top. So it looks like...
So it's a labeling thing?
Yeah, it just doesn't track. And it looks like either the math is wrong or we're padding numbers when in fact, it just refers to a different start date.
Got you. Okay. Understandable. Thank you.
All right, anything else? That's a lot of kids. That's a lot of kids. We love them all. Okay. Monthly budget status report, Mr. Kimball.
Okay, with 83% of the fiscal year elapsed, and we're in the home stretch here, given revenues received and we're anticipating receiving through the end of the year money that's been spent and obligated, and we anticipate spending through the end of this fiscal year. The school operating fund is anticipated to end the year with a positive balance of $636,000. This does include the unspent $186,000 that was not transferred to the general fund this year for TJ debt since that obligation had been met by the previous transfer. And this will leave us adequate funds to carry forward into FY14 as planned. We have had programmed in $486,000 in the FY14 budget as carry forward. And so we will be able to meet that number. In terms of the food service fund, we were off to a rocky start at the beginning of the year, but we are going to end the year in the black. We project about $4,000 there. And in terms of the community service fund, it's doing very well. This is predominantly a result of daycare. About $90,000, this is daycare. And we project about $137,000 in terms of the ending balance in that fund.
Any questions about that?
Just one, food service fund. You don't mention Mary Ellen Henderson. It says Mount Daniel, Thomas Jefferson, and George Mason.
Oh, okay.
And I think, I know. I think we've noticed this before and I know that we give them lunch too.
We do, we do. And they appreciate it.
Yeah.
They're actually one of our best customers.
There you go. I would simply point out for the board that under materials for board review is the city council's third quarter financial update for this year. I point this out because it kind of complements what we're looking at, which is our own for this year. I don't know, Mr. Kimball, if you wanted to say a few comments about the city side just to bring this up today?
Well, thank you, Ms. Carney. Actually, Dr. Jones and I did contact Richard LaConde right today to seek some clarification to say, you know, this is April the 5th, this is third quarter. You know, is there any new information? Is there anything that's much, much better than new? Any more good news? Because we had heard that the ending, the ending balance was going to be more in the range of $2.5 million. Mr. LaConde was able to clarify that that $2.5 million also did include the program, the planned use of current year fund balance, i.e., you know, restoration of fund balance. And so that was added to the $1.1 to $1.7 million that he was projecting in April. At this point, new numbers will be available. He said in mid-July. But essentially, that the April 5th third-quarter report is still the lay of the land right now with surplus revenue projected at $1.1 to $1.7 million.
Thanks. So no change there. That's very helpful. I also wanted to let my colleagues know that I've asked Dr. Jones on this monthly budget status report, if in the next fiscal year, particularly for the operating fund, if we can get the next level of detail, actual in budget invariance, that we could see by major spending categories, not way down here in the weeds, but the next level of detail, how we're tracking, so we can have that information. I think for the community, the transparency would be good. And for this board, it will feel like we're a little bit more well-informed, so. And she said they would. All right. Next item. School board calendar.
This is just, again, not an item to vote on, but just for your, to look at and review. The dates for summer are on here. So down through September is very set as far as let you know the date of the meetings, what the sessions are and where they will be held. Because, you know, in the summer, sometimes we're here and sometimes we're at central office. The one thing that's not reflected on here in the summer, and I will be sending a message as well, is on July 16th, we are going to have an early start at 7:00. And it would be optional, but I would encourage people to attend for safety. And the city police will be attending. And as you know, they wanted the school board to participate in the run-hide fight. And so Mary Gavin is working with her staff. And they're also just going to go over a couple of safety features for us to know about the dais and things of that nature, so. And she's going to do that in 30 minutes and compact that for us. But I'll be sending you an invitation for that. And again, it is optional, but I would encourage you to attend. And we have gone all the way through the year and tried to follow the last few budget cycles just to give people an idea of what the calendar's going to look like. Because what, at least for me, what I have found is that our calendars changed so radically in January because we're waiting on the city to come out with dates. And what we've done this year, so we've set the calendar based on traditionally the way it has been with the city. We've actually sent the calendar over to the city for their review, seeing if we can get a better coordinated calendar before the school year starts for everybody get a better coordinated calendar before the school year starts for everybody, so that people setting up business meetings and travel meetings and that sort of thing will actually have more advanced notice of what our calendar might look like. So if you have any feedback, you know, we're more than welcome to hear that.
All right. I'll point out one thing on the calendar, which is the July 23rd work session, where we're going to talk a bit about gifted and talented, but also about the school board work plan for next fiscal year. Tony's going to draft the work plan, so if you have particular items or topics that you'd like to see on the work plan for next year, the sooner you can get them to Dr. Jones, the better. She's going to take this year's work plan, she's going to take the insight she has from working with her staff and understanding what's going on there. Will take input from us. She'll draft it on the 23rd, we'll take a look and give her feedback on it, and then later in the summer, we'll adopt a work plan for the year, so.
Quick question. It's a courtesy, given that we now know who the candidates are going forward, could we make sure that they always got a copy of the calendar, so be aware of what's happening between now and then?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, that's right, that, between now and November, there'll be a lot of meetings. Thank you.
There will be. In fact, Craig, I plan to reach out to each of them individually and invite them to begin to come and see our meetings and kind of get in.
And I might just add the other thing that Marty did for you is just do the visual calendar. This is a school board, not a school calendar, so that you have your meeting dates, where there are school board joint meets, shows you the winter breaks, shows you the school holidays. So this is just a school board, kind of put on a bulletin board or fridge calendar that might help you. And then Marty is also going to send invites for the summer meetings for your Google calendar, so that for those of you who prefer to operate that way, I think that may be helpful. And then if we did have to do a change of meeting, it makes it easier for us to notify you electronically. So we're going to do that this summer for you as well.
Great. I like it. All right. Superintendent's report.
Okay, I'll try to be quick here. Of course, we've had the athletics accolades, which you heard tonight. We also had a cappy winner, so I don't want that to go without saying, on Sunday night, very exciting for Jema- for Jema- Jevaje Menen. So we're very excited for him and just, you know, honored that he's one of our talented kiddos. And we've been at awards at all the different sites. We'll have Mount Daniels next week, been at TJ's this week, which is always fun for me, went to the chorus concert. And if you missed it, the chorus concert was just awesome. I mean, it really was. I think too, because the music started like in the 70s and 80s, it was kind of like my era, maybe that was it. But it was really a great concert, I loved it. We also have some of our MEH students traveling down to the state to be recognized at the state level. They will choose an overall winner, but for the Husky Chef competition, which was just awesome for our CTE program. And there's actually an article in front of you that we were published in two magazines, national magazines, just within the last, I think the last about two or three weeks, on the Husky Chef program. And so we printed that off for you, and that's, of course, Richard Kane's wonderful work on representing our food service program and doing an awesome job. The visioning, of course, is coming up on the 29th. We are still, you know, recruiting and have a door open for that. And right now, we're at about 100 participants, so we're feeling really pretty good. We would still like more, but we're trying to also make sure that with Danny Miller Tyson, one thing we have to do is make sure the tables are all balanced, so it's representative of the community. So we're trying to make sure we're not too staff-heavy or, you know, too heavy in one area. So if you haven't signed up to anybody in the community, please, you know, email me, email Mary Beth, so that we can look at that. And then, of course, did you have a question?
Just, how many students do you have?
Right now, we're still working on the student issue. One of the things, and we've been working with Danny Miller Tyson's on this, is it's trying to get, we're not going to have them at the tables. We're looking at having them on the panel. And part of that is getting a student balance, because at one table, you might have an IB student, at another table, you might have somebody having a totally different experience. So in working with them, they're going to be part of the panel. And so we're working on that right now. And of course, I think one of our, you know, what we're all about in the business of schools is what we will do tomorrow afternoon at 5:00, and that's graduation. That's really what it's all about. So we're excited to, I can't believe the end of the year is already here, but looking forward to being in Constitution Hall tomorrow. So, and that's all. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Time for board comments. And Ms. Curtin, may I start with you this evening?
I don't really have very much to add to Dr. Jones, and I know we're all trying to get out of here, but just congratulations to our athletes again. Amazing performances on everyone. The awards ceremonies for athletics and for academics have been going on, and exams are going on right now at Mason, so that's what all the high school students are involved in this week. And then, other than that, that's really all I have for you guys. Everyone's looking forward to summer, so that's what the students are all concentrating on right now.
And Maeve, I think that you were also recognized for lacrosse award that night at the event.
Yes.
So congratulations.
Thank you, thank you very much.
I'll say that the staff is also looking forward to summer. Parents, maybe not so much, but the staff certainly. Mr. Lawrence, do you want to start board comments on that end?
Just a couple of things. First of all, I manned a station at MEH Field Day in the pouring rain. And when they tell parents that if you do a water station, you don't have to worry you're not going to get wet, well, that's a big fat lie. I sent Tony a picture, my pants were completely covered in mud, my shoes still aren't dry. But luckily, I manned the station with Maeve's mom, Maureen, so we just had the greatest time. When it started to pour, you just, you put your hood up and you stayed out there and laughed at the kids as they kept falling and falling and falling in the mud, more and more. And it was just great. So I think they should schedule it in the driving rain every single time, because the kids clearly thought it was the best time they'd had. It was amazing. Other than that, you know, when you were talking about technology earlier on, Power School, just, you know, getting those weekly emails has been fantastic this year. So, you know, got the one yesterday, and was able to tell my son, you know, what's this? And he went and looked, and, you know, there's that little piece of homework that didn't get turned in last week, and, you know, which he would have regretted come Thursday afternoon when he can't turn it in. So it was very helpful. Dr. Jones talked about the Mount Daniel meeting. One little thing that we did to help, you know, be nice to the Mount Daniel neighborhood was they were complaining that the, about the security gate, because, you know, they were used to using the playground, and the gate had been locked. It wasn't supposed to be locked, but there was some miscommunication, and it was locked and unlocked, and, but they're very happy now. They appreciate the fact that, you know, what they see is their neighborhood park is once again available. So, you know, thanks to Tony and to Sevi, the Cherry Street meeting, it was locked again, and, you know, Sevi's sitting in the front of the room at the same time, he's on his phone calling somebody to go out and unlock the gate because he can't leave the room. So it was just great, but that's it. Thank you.
Great. And thank you, John, for being our liaison on the Mount Daniel project into that neighborhood, and for reaching out, and you and Tony meeting with them. I think that's a great example. All right, Mr. Sharp?
Well, I want to say thank you to all the staff who were honored at the retirement ceremony. We've had some wonderful, long-term staff members in various roles in our schools, teaching, couriers, facility folks. And I'm very pleased that our chair, Susan, and Greg Chaney, and Maeve were there to help honor them. And of course, Tony doing much of the master ceremonies role. I also want to acknowledge the passing of a great leader in our community, and indeed in our region, Walter Mess, not just in the Northern Virginia region, but throughout the metropolitan area. Walter was an attorney, very active in commercial development in the area, also the chair for decades of the Northern Virginia Regional Park Authority. And during the time of his early leadership of the Regional Park Authority, they acquired property which is now our George Mason and Mary Ellen Henderson property. And they were the ones that transferred that their possession of that property to the city and school board to, that's how, that's how the property came into the city and schools' hands. And they went through a process of very detailed fundraising to be able to acquire the property initially. Fake sales, and, you know, you can name all the little ways of fundraising, and I think they probably did it. So definitely a thank you to Walter, and his memory will be with us for, his legacy will be with us for many, many years. We also have a person who is approaching her 100th birthday, who was the, at least one of the leaders in bringing about the city's charter, Jesse Thackeray. Her celebration will begin with her, her church is honoring her this coming Sunday on the 16th, and then on the 23rd, there's a ceremony at Mary Ellen Henderson in the mid to late afternoon for Jesse, and be happy to participate in honoring her. And I urge many to come to one or both of those celebrations. I did attend the FLE last week. The committee had its final meeting, and your reports in, among the committee reports. Also want to thank the CBC for their bringing together a panel for helping candidates to be able to understand what it means to run for city council and for school board. I think they were quite successful in encouraging candidates to run, and it looks like we have at least the number running that we'll need for the school board, and more than the seats available for the city council. Both are very, very good developments. The Falls Church Education Foundation had their casino night, also a very, very successful outing. And I was struck that during the auctioning of items for that evening, there were many bids even from people outside the Falls Church residents and community. And so the people even from, who don't have a direct interest in our schools, were helping to provide additional supplemental funding as the, as the education foundation does each year. The Run for Schools Committee will begin its meeting tomorrow morning, and the Run for Schools event will be on September 8th, Sunday, again, this coming year. I'll also note Fairfax Partnership for Youth had a reception this last Saturday, which raised money for the activities that they support, which include mentoring, anti-bullying activities, and prevention of suicide and depression. The Partnership for Youth and the Lions Club here in Falls Church will be holding a golf tournament July 22nd at the 1757 Club, which is out near Dulles, one of the best golf courses in the area. And any who'd like to participate or sponsor, appreciate if you'd look online at the Golf Invite site, which is www.golfinvite.com/fpylionsgolf2013. Chamber of Commerce had their annual outdoor meeting at Rowell Court despite a downpour about 10 days ago. And it's a very, very good gathering. Lots of people stayed through the rain and then after the rain. And the Chamber will, again, hold their usual monthly luncheon at the Italian Cafe next Tuesday. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Mr. Chaney?
A couple of things. I saw four great soccer games in Radford over the weekend, so congratulations to those teams. I also got to preside over the Athletic Boosters Awards Ceremony for the spring, gave out our six scholarships. Probably the highlight of the evening was their announcement that we have, well, adding a seventh scholarship for next year in honor of Judy Love now. And so that will be awarded for the first time next year. Community and friends very generously have donated over almost $10,000. And that, details of that scholarship are being worked out, but it will be reflecting what Judy brought to the community. So that'll be a seventh scholarship. It'll also be a four-year scholarship, $1,000 a year for each of four years. So it'll be a little different than the other scholarships that we offer. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Rasmussen.
Just a couple of quick things. One, I wanted to just make it official that I have elected not to seek reelection. I wanted to thank both Mr. Lawrence and our board chair for seeking to continue on in their service, and I wanted to thank Charlotte and Craig for being smart enough to join me in the private sector. Actually, no, thank you for your long service to the board, both of you. And wanted to thank Mr. Sharp for, I just realized, day 15 years of service on the board. I don't, I really admire you guys. I mean, Charlotte, five years, and Susan, I think, seven years. It's a really major commitment, and I really admire each and every one of you. And the only other thing I want to say was that I know at the University of Virginia, they probably make everything about the Declaration of Independence about Mr. Jefferson, but Caesar Rodney rode 70 miles in thunderstorms to vote in person to break the tie that actually gave us the nation we have today, so.
Thank you.
There's the illusion.
Thank you. It's helpful. Ms. Highland?
Thank goodness for horses.
Thank goodness for horses.
It's been a long time.
He would have made it anyway, but.
The George Mason Athletic Boosters and the PTSA both held meetings to elect their officers for next year. And at the Athletic Boosters meeting that was held during the banquet, Jesse Roth was elected president, so I'd also like to thank Craig for his years of service for them, but I know he's going to continue on in many different roles probably for the boosters. And Kathleen Donovan is going to be the president of the PTSA next year, I believe. And all-night grad celebration is happening after graduation tomorrow night. I'm going to be there for that. I'm in charge of the activities, I'm one of the co-chairs of the activities, and it should be a lot of fun. It's going to be at George Mason this year. And we are busily preparing for all the students to come back at 11:45 tomorrow night and spend the night. I don't know if I'm going to see any of you all there. I guess maybe Dr. Jones, maybe Mr. Chaney. Hopefully. It should be a lot of fun. Thanks.
Of course you are. All right. I have just a couple of things for this evening. The first is I want to remind my colleagues in the community as well that at our July meeting, we'll be having our organizational meeting at the beginning. What that means is we'll elect a chairman, and we'll elect a vice chair, we'll determine the nights we're going to meet, and the times, and the places, and all of those things for the year. So I would encourage members of the school board to be thinking about days and times to meet, who you'd like to support for leadership and those kinds of things. That'll be our July meeting, I think it's on the 11th. I'm not sure whatever date it is, but it's the second Tuesday in July. But before we get to that, as Dr. Jones said, on Saturday, the 29th of June, we're having the community-wide vision session for the schools. And I just want to say a few more things about it for the community's benefit as well as for my colleagues. This really is a community-wide event. We have invited members of our city council, of city staff, of city boards and commissions, of course, the school board, school staff, students, our boards and commission, parents, other members of the community who are not parents, as well as members of our business community. We really feel like it's important for every voice to be heard in this. As she mentioned, we have 100 people signed up so far, and we hope to have many more. We can accommodate as many as 200, and so we hope people will come on that Saturday. I know it's the summer, and I know it's Saturday, and people want to do other things. But the input from this session is what the school board will use as we set our strategies and plans for the next few years, and we want to hear what the community thinks we need to be doing. I also want to shout out to the planning group for this particular exercise. You may not be aware that there is a planning group, but there is. This is a group of 18 committed individuals, once again, representing our entire community, the business community, parents, non-parents, staff, city council, and others. There are 18 members of this planning committee who have invested a lot of time, and it is that group that has determined the agenda for the day, the topics for the day, and how it will flow. It hasn't been dictated by the school board, or the superintendent, or anybody else. What we've done is provided a place and a facilitator for these members of the community to decide how this should flow based on the community's interests. And we spent an entire day together, just against about two weeks ago, with our facilitator planning the day. We have that now. And so I want to thank them for their participation. They will obviously be there as well on Saturday, and we've had some phone calls in between to talk as well. So I hope that lots of people will come to this. I think it is going to be an unusual kind of session for us here in Falls Church, and really for any community, to reach that widely, to get the opinions of so many folks about school board and community relations, about facilities, about our new high school needs, about taking care of every student, and the key things that we want to be thinking about as we plan for our schools to be the best they can be for every kid. If you haven't caught this in the newspaper, Fairfax County and the Virginia Board of Education are partnering to, at Falls Church High School down the way here, open a governor's school focused on health studies. That's going to take a few years to get rolling, but it'll be a little bit similar to TJ in that there'll be a specific core set of courses that can be taken there that focus on health, but it will be within the Falls Church High School. And it may be that this board next year wants to start talking about whether we'd like to approach Fairfax County to participate in that in the same way we participate in TJ. And TJ may be a topic for us next year, too, as they start their renovation in addition and look for money for that. I want to thank Dave Shaver. David Shaver has been a longtime activist in this community, and he's one of the sharpest and most rational guys I know, anyway, and has always been a supporter of the schools. His most recent job was as president of the Education Foundation. He's resigned that position and is moving on to do some other things, not the least of which is the incredibly responsible job he holds down every day. But I want to recognize him and thank him for his good work on the foundation and his good work advocating for the schools, and we hope you won't stop that advocating for the schools, even though you've moved along to other things. Several years ago, this board, through Mr. Kimball, requested of the state planning office that we participate in a third-party efficiency review of our operations here in the school division. At that time, the board felt it was important to have a set of objective eyeballs, look at what we're doing, and see if there are things we could be doing more effectively or efficiently that would not reduce services to students or staff, but help us do a better job. Our number finally almost came up this year. I think this is the third year we've been on the waitlist, and that's the good news. The bad news is the General Assembly has significantly cut funding for the program. And so back in the day when we got on the list, the cost was going to be 30, maybe $40,000, and if we implemented a certain percentage of the recommendations, it would be free to us to do this study. It's not that anymore. It's now more like $120,000 and paid up front and, you know, accounts things. So that's clearly not in our budget. So I've asked the superintendent and Mr. Kimball to see if they can find an alternate way for us to get some of that objective looking at our operations without having to spend that kind of money, and they're going to try to figure that out. I also talked just briefly with Gina Patterson down at the VSBA and kind of put a bug in her ear to see if maybe VSBA would want to offer such a service to all school divisions. I think it would be helpful to school divisions to have it, and I think it would also be a great way for VSBA to collect data from all school divisions for benchmarking and other purposes. We sometimes look at Washington area boards of education, but that's not always apples, and it's difficult for us, and I think it would be helpful for all school divisions to have some benchmarking data. So I'm not sure if they're going to pick us up on that, but I just wanted to bring the board up to date on that, because that's something that's been sitting in the wings for a while. And I think those are my things. Other than that, I'm really looking forward to graduation tomorrow. Other than standing in the front hall at Mount Daniel in the morning when the buses come, graduation is the best thing that I get to do as a member of the school board, and I hope other members of the board will be able to go as well as the community. So those are my comments, and I think the last thing we have on the agenda this evening is minutes, the approval of minutes. I can't remember what it was, because I'm an old woman. I ask unanimous consent that we approve the minutes of May 7th? Without objection, so ordered. All right. With that, we should be adjourned for this evening. Thank you, Mr. Rasmussen.